Welcome, we will call to order the regular session of the Clarksville City Council for March 7th, 2013. It is a little past 7:00 PM. We will begin tonight with the prayer led by Councilman Redd and the pledge of allegiance led by Councilman Grubbs.
Let us pray. Lord, we just ask for your guidance as we go through our meeting tonight. Lord, we just ask for your wisdom. Lord, we just pray for our city employees and our soldiers that are in harms way. Lord, we just pray for our mayor and her family. And, Lord, just help us to conduct ourselves with our meeting tonight with honor and with respect. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pray to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Members, please register your attendance. I believe there were thirteen members present. Is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you. And we want to welcome you, Susan. Everyone knows that she's not Sylvia Skinner. Sylvia is actually ill tonight, and so Susan has graciously agreed to help us out in Sylvia's absence, so thank you very much. All right, we'll now move on with the agenda. The next item is zoning. Councilman Grubbs?
Thank you, Mayor. Madam Clark, will you please read ordinance 73 and 74?
Ordinance 73, 2012-13, first reading. Amending the zoning ordinance and map of the city of Clarksville. Application of Jeff Burkhardt for zone change on property at Trenton Road and Kennedy Road from AG Agricultural District to R2 Single Family Residential District. RPC approval, approval. Ordinance 74, 2012-13, first reading. Amending the zoning ordinance and the official code of the city of Clarksville relative to cluster option development. RPC approval, approval.
Thank you, Madam Clark. Mayor, I move that we go into public hearing.
Probably moved, properly seconded. We are in public hearing. At this point, we will call out the ordinances, and we will allow two members to speak in favor and two members to speak in opposition to the ordinance. We'll begin with the first ordinance on the agenda, ordinance 73. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of ordinance 73? We'll now move on to ordinance 74. Is there anyone that wishes to speak in favor of ordinance 74? Is there anyone that wishes to speak in opposition to ordinance 74?
My name is Rachel Rutland. Despite what people may believe, I was and am not opposed to the use of the cluster development. But there's a time and place for all developments. It's important to balance the needs of the adjacent homeowners, the developers, and the city's interest. It should be about developing a cohesive, well-thought-out community and not just what can be reaped in profits. The RPC-recommended changes aren't simply cross-references but are downright changes to suit what they were approving illegally, citing that that was the original intent. No matter the intent, that is not what is in the law. Changing it to match their legal action is not right. If the changes are desired, then change it so it makes sense in what is balanced and not just what the developer wants. It doesn't make sense to have a landscape buffer deeded to the homeowner and to backdoor the minimum lot size, or even have a landscape buffer as part of the open space calculation. Yes, it should be deeded to the homeowners' association but separate in a part of the open space. The landscape buffer is supposed to be dense enough to buffer the existing developments from the new. Putting walkways and such will only take away from the buffering effect. It doesn't make sense to include FEMA flood planes in the open space calculation but exclude localized flood planes. It doesn't make sense to have all open space have environmental constraints so that can't be used for enjoyment of the residence of the subject track. The RPC revisions still usurp the authority of the city council to set the zoning and expect the zoning size lots to be built. It is true, the cluster doesn't increase the density, but it does allow for smaller lots. Lot size, not just the number of lots, an integral part of the zoning classifications. Applicants request a certain zoning size, and if it's disapproved, they go ahead with a cluster to decrease their lot size. That doesn't make sense either. So, it just doesn't make sense to have a 15,000 K lot or greater in R1. Please remember, areas annexed from the county were 20,000 minimum square foot, all right, lots, next to a 5,000 lot, or even with a landscape buffer. That just doesn't make sense. That's too drastic, too quickly, and if everybody overuses this option going forward, what choice will the public have in housing? Small lots and smaller lots. Infill development should be driven dependent on the existing residential development, allowing variation in size with buffers, but not so far to the left that it primarily benefits the developers at the expense of current homeowners. It would make much more sense to keep the provisions allowing only one step down when a landscape buffer is installed on the perimeter lots, so they could have varying sizes depending on the adjacent and adjoining of the existing developments and whether a landscape buffer was used into the design. It's not a bad trade-off considering other alternatives to the adjacent homeowners. 5K lots, on the other hand, not so good. Then the interior lots would be dependent and controlled by the predominant perimeter lot size of the cluster, so the cluster itself would not be designated R1, R1A, R2, R2A, but Cluster, with certain restrictions that still provided incentives for infill development. This is similar to a PUD and an M-LID classification you already have. Based on the feedback from last Thursday's executive session, it seems making a cluster development a zoning classification instead of a development option is an acceptable suggestion to the homeowners and so they know what might be developed. I urge you tonight not to show favoritism into your laws to those who have money and power, but I urge you not to rush into a vote for against or against cluster amendments, but to pause and to consider the alternatives. What options would you want for your family and the families of Clarksville? I understand not everyone wants big lots, but not everyone wants small lots either. Please do not take away the choice of the public by so narrowly striking or shrinking the lot size so small that the developers favor this option too greatly. They will not readily choose conventional zoning classification if this one is available with extremely smaller lots. Instead, allow the cluster development to still step down but be dependent on existing residential developments for a more cohesive community approach. Allow it to be zoning for classification so the city who bears a part of the responsibility has a voice in its use with other types of special classifications. This is not a decision to take lightly, and it will affect people's housing options and their quality of life. Thank you.
Does anyone else wish to speak in opposition to ordinance 74? Councilman Grubbs?
Mayor, I move we go back into regular session.
Properly moved, properly seconded. We are back in regular session. At this point, if we could take just a slight recess, I need to ask Mr. Baker a question.
I had a comment on the ordinance once we are to that point.
Councilman Burkhardt, did you?
I'm just going to add that for obvious reasons, I'm going to be abstaining on this vote.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. As a reminder, all motions upon the advice of legal counsel shall be for approval. Ordinance 74, 2012-13, both the staff and the regional planning commission recommendation is for approval.
Councilwoman McLaughlin?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to send this back to the planning commission for language that would require final approval of cluster developments to be determined by the city council.
We have a motion properly seconded. We have a number of individuals who wish to be recognized. Councilman Harris, do you wish to be recognized on this motion?
No, ma'am, it was on the original.
Okay. Councilman Redd, do you wish to be recognized on the motion?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
On the motion to send it back.
To send it back to the regional planning commission.
We can't amend it?
No, it has to have their approval first.
Oh, sorry. Okay.
There was just some questions as to whether there was a motion and a second on the original ordinance, and there was, and now there's been a motion made to refer it back to the RPC. And so, did you wish to be recognized?
We can't amend it here? If there's an amendment, it has to go back?
I believe that the city attorney has advised that it will have to go back to the RPC in order to amend it. Is that correct? You may want to speak to that.
I thought I copied everybody on that email.
I was busy, I'm sorry.
Basically, if it's any kind of material or substantive change at all, such that it may have affected the RPC's decision on whether to recommend approval or not, then the courts have stated that is the test, and it has to go back to the RPC for review. And obviously, or maybe it's not obvious, but in my opinion, what she's asked for would be a substantive material change that could have affected the RPC's decision, so I think it would have to go back.
Sorry, I didn't.
Okay. Councilman Harris?
Mr. Baker, I have a question. The situation we've been undergoing for the last several months pertaining to clusters and RPC pertaining to the whole thing, a postponement. My concern is if we postpone it, that means the language that's on the books right now that's creating all this confusion will continue on until we do something to stop it. And what Mr. Ripple proposed at the executive session was just to close that loop. In other words, what we do on a normal basis, what we call housekeeping, crossing Ts and dotting Is. I was under the impression at the executive session, that's exactly what that document was. I totally agree with Councilwoman McLaughlin that we need to look at this and redo it, but my concern is if we postpone it and send it back, we still have this open T that's not crossed. What situation would the city be into by not having it addressed until it's resolved with redoing the zoning cluster and whatever?
Until you fix the language, you're under the threat of lawsuits. My advice to you is that you go ahead and approve and pass the proposed amendments by the RPC staff that was approved by the RPC in order to fix the problem, the immediate problem with the cluster language in the zoning code as it exists right now. And later on, if you want to add to it with separate legislation by doing, as I understand, what Councilmember McLaughlin is wanting to do is make it subject to, like it's, either treat it, actually make it a zoning district, or if not necessarily make it a zoning district, but still before it can be applied, it would have to come to the council to be approved, just like a zoning change.
And that's a good point.
You can do that with separate legislation, but...
And I agree with that. Now, with changes this, what would the timeline be on that? By the time we send it back to a committee for discussion and RPC, and then have the first reading, then the second reading, we're talking 60 to 90 days, correct?
Yeah, unless you have special calls sessions.
Which I hope not. But, and that's my point whereby, that's what I took from last week, was this was a housekeeping measure to correct the language that was written prior to that created this issue, and that I think we definitely need to go forward with the next 60 to 90 days with legislation. Thank you, Mayor. That answered my question.
Councilman Allen?
Lance, I guess this is for you, Lance.
Yes, sir.
Well, I was under the impression that what was on the books was legal and that it would stand the test.
I never said that. I told you over and over, Councilman Allen, that there's problems with it, it's obvious there's a problem with it, and I even told you that her, Ms. Rutland's interpretation is the most logical interpretation in my view. But what I also have told you is that doesn't mean that you should file a lawsuit about it.
Okay, but we still...
It's a problem. It needs fixing.
Okay, but the regional planning commission is still approving clusters under the old...
What the RPC needs to be doing is applying the law as, my understanding that there's been some applications made that are pending. And what the case law says is that you must apply the zoning code law that's in effect at the time the application is made. So, you've got to apply the old law to any pending applications. But that's not necessarily going to be helpful to a developer because what the RPC can do for existing applications is change their interpretation. They're not changing the language yet, that's what y'all are going to be voting on. And so, they would still be applying the old law, but they can change their interpretation of it, and I've advised them to do so because I believe their interpretation is probably erroneous and is not the best interpretation. And I've told them that.
Okay, well, I mean, I'm kind of in a dilemma here. That's basically what was said when it was brought up. Then we chose not to act on it. And now we're coming back and saying that what was written was not proper, and it needed to be addressed. And so now we're trying to address it, but we wouldn't fix what we knew was wrong to start with.
No, what that was is a motion to file a lawsuit. And whether or not the law was written, good or bad, and I've said all along I thought it was bad, doesn't compel the conclusion that you should file a lawsuit. And we've already gone over, both in non-public session and in public session, the reasons why.
Okay, so you're saying that if we postpone this because we have to send it back to RPC...
Only if you take up an amendment.
Take up an amendment, which I'm definitely in favor of. Because, you know, you run into this problem, and this will stop the problem because it would have to come before us, and we would know it's going to be a cluster, and so would the community, those that the neighborhood butts up to. And they would have a chance to voice their concerns, and then we could take that into consideration in our decision-making process.
I'm not sure, are you asking a question? I mean, I'm not sure what your question is.
I'm saying the delay. What's so hairy up about getting it changed instead of sending it back and getting what we would like to have added in, what I would like to add?
Because the current existing law can be construed in more than one way. And I think you should go ahead and fix it now instead of waiting to correct the whole cluster part, you know, in other ways. You need to do an immediate fix right now to prevent the possibility of more lawsuits. That's just my advice to you.
Which would still give us 60 days because there has to be another reading on it. So, in the meantime, what? We're subject to lawsuits?
That's right.
Okay.
Councilman Stewart?
My question's for you as well, Mr. Baker. So, I just need kind of a clarification, kind of following up on what Mr. Harris was saying. If it were just a matter of cleaning up language, I could maybe understanding, let's put the Band-Aid on and revisit the whole thing. But in my reading of what we had presented compared to what's on the books, it's more of, there are more substantive changes in there. And if we're going to go ahead and make substantive changes other than just dotting Is and crossing Ts, I think that if we should get the final product that we want instead of piecemealing, instead of passing it this month and then having to look at it again next month. So I think that if we are looking to get a product that we're truly happy with, it would be worth the delay, especially if we're, without the delay, we're still exposed to litigation. Would you characterize this as that there are substantive changes in this compared to the original one, or that this is simply housekeeping type of measure?
It's substantive in the sense that it makes more clear what was not as clear as it should have been. It deals with those two clauses that, in the lot widths and lot sizes, that had that clause that talked about excluding perimeter lots. That's the main change. And then there's some other, some of it is housekeeping, I believe, some of it's substantive. I mean, and I guess my response to you is, you're entitled to your opinion, you don't have to vote in favor of this. My advice to you is to clean it up now and as soon as possible in order to get this done to avoid the possibility of lawsuits. And if you want to do more later, then we can take it up next month. You don't have to follow my advice, though.
Sure. I just think that if we're going to get it right, let's get it right the first time and not rush to get something done, especially if we intend on revisiting it in another 30 days.
Well, I will say this, the problems as it's currently written, those problems are not going to go away, and you can certainly deal with them here tonight and then on a second reading.
Right. In which case, again, we're still even in that, it's essentially 60 days versus 90 days that we're open to litigation.
Yeah. Well, another approximately 30 days if you pass it tonight on first reading.
Okay.
30 versus 90.
Thank you.
Councilman Burkhardt?
Mayor, may I ask Dr. Ripple a question? There's no objection.
I see no objection, Dr. Ripple.
I guess I'd like your opinion a little bit on this, because I know this is not a cluster zone. Cluster zone affects every zone, R1, R2, and R1A. So there's actually three cluster zones, correct?
This is a single provision that allows flexibility within the various lot sizes, but it does, the bottom line, it does not increase density over the existing zoning, how the property is zoned.
I was talking about if we send it back where the city council has to approve, and it's an actual zone, like R1 cluster, R1A cluster, all those would be a new zoning classification, separate and apart from R1 and Cluster as we know it.
Correct. It would be, right now, this is flexibility within existing provisions by which the developer chooses whether or not to take a traditional subdivision route or follow the cluster route, and that the planning commission then approves the subdivision in a ministerial act. In other words, if the development meets the requirements, the planning commission shall approve it. What is being suggested here, where that language be added by which the city council would approve the cluster development constitutes a rezoning, and it therefore becomes a discretionary act on the part of the city council. So the closest parallel we have today is there is a planned unit development provision that's currently on the books for the city that allows flexibility in terms of how development would occur, and that has been used since 1995 for 12 different cases, all those being residential in nature. Five of those were withdrawn or turned down by the city council. So, the big change here in referring it back to the planning commission is now you're changing from something that was ministerial, implemented by the planning commission, to something that is now discretionary on the part of the city council, and it is, as you described, it would be like a planned unit development where every cluster that would come forward would be a rezoning action applicable to that individual tract, and would be unique to that tract itself.
In your opinion, how long would it take to write those regs?
It depends on what the desire is here, number one, why not use the existing planned unit development that's already books? Number two, if you wanted something to be akin to what is in the cluster provision, and all you're doing is asking that it come forward to the city council, that's relatively easy, but realize that when you do that, you're also taking the action to repeal the existing cluster provision that's on the books at the same time. And again, like I said, you're shifting from a process where it's ministerial to one that's discretionary on a pottery zoning. I would ask you to think about what impact that has on the overall community, in particular in terms of the opportunities to treat all properties equally that are in similar zoning categories, such that those that have environmental constraints have an opportunity for a reasonable return. I would also think that the fact that you're going through, that you're starting with the cluster, with a particular zone, you're compelling the applicant to go through a rezoning process, but the applicant is not getting any additional density, he's not getting additional lots, all he's getting is some permission to how he arranges those lots and the size of lots on the interior. So I'm not sure what the inducement is to the subdivider to even go through that process. And I point back to the fact that the planned unit development on the books since 1995, only 12 have come forward, five have been turned down, the last one was in 2010, it was approved. It could be accomplished now, today, under the R5 zone instead of going through a planned unit development.
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Jones?
Thank you, Mayor. I guess I'm confused. Before we voted on the last vote for bringing a lawsuit, I've listened to Mr. Baker and I've understood what he has said, that, you know, he felt like there were some changes that needed to be made. I talked with Dr. Ripple on the phone, and he said they had no intentions of bringing anything forward, that they were not going to initiate any changes. And I'm sitting here again, listening to a discussion over whether we should put this off or whether we should deal with this now. My only one question would be, if we passed this tonight as it sat, could it not be, on its next reading, could the amendment not be made and voted on then with them already working on it? Is that not possible? Okay, so then we really are a minimum of 60 days out or 90 days with an amendment. But I'm a little confused from the conflicting advice that I'm getting. I'm getting one thing from the city attorney, another thing from the RPC, and they don't seem to meld, so I'm just confused.
I don't know what you're talking about, conflicting advice. I think we're saying the exact same thing.
Not, our conversation on the phone was not the same thing.
We've talked about this, we...
No, no, that's not what I said.
Listen, I know, if he's going to continue to talk, I mean, you can't talk from out in the audience, so if you want to respond, you need to come up here, Dr. Ripple.
Councilwoman Jones, when you asked that question, that was prior to... Councilwoman Jones, when you asked that question, that was prior to a charge or a request by the mayor, the city attorney, and several other members of this council that we go on and proceed.
Okay, see-
So your question, when you asked me, was prior to us even initiating the change process.
And I understand-
And we have come forward, in I would think a very expeditious manner, between the time of the last city council meeting in February to this point today, we introduced it last week, we introduced changes that cleared up the confusion, all of the language, and we also modified the provisions such that was clear that the landscape buffer could not be included in individual lots as a part of the lot size, so that would be, remain open space. So we believe that we have altered the regulation at this point in time to remove that confusion, all the landscape buffer, the perimeter lot sizes, and, and remove some of the concern relative to a landscape buffer having been included in individual lots as opposed to being maintained to open space. At this point in time, we, I turned down, just on Tuesday, accepting a cluster development that would have involved a landscape buffer, because they could not meet the one step-down size rule relative to perimeter. On the other hand, last month, we likewise received a cluster development that had a landscape buffer, and we instructed the developer to remove the landscape buffer and meet the one-step-down size rule on the perimeter lots relative to their size. They were to meet, they were able to meet that particular requirement, and we approved that preliminary subdivision. At the time you initially asked that question, why is the planning commission still approving cluster subdivisions? The cluster subdivision that would, that just had been approved was located in the county, and it was a final plat where the preliminary subdivision had been approved six months before this issue had even come up with. At the final plat stage, as you know, the developer's already put in all the improvements, road improvements, they met all the requirements, the plan commission has no choice but to approve something where the developer has put all the improvements as required of him. And that was the instance in, that you asked me about at that point in time.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
You can understand why I'm confused, though, I'm getting one thing here and then not knowing that you're working together and going forward. The first I hear of any changes is last week, when I was actually out of town, so, you know, I've had no time or chance to talk to anyone. But I thank you both for, for your input, and I think that, I think that answers my questions.
The, you know, maybe the, one of the odd times, I believe the mayor and maybe Councilman Summers perhaps agreed on something, but if you remember, Councilman Summers was, I don't know if it was executive session or previously when this came up, but he made it very clear that he thought something should be getting done on it. And the mayor felt like something should be done on it, too. And as the city attorney, by the charter, it's part of my job is to try to prevent lawsuits against the city, and I certainly feel like something needs to be done, so.
And that was, that was what prompted me to call this Dr. Ripple, because I'm listening to you, and I'm hearing what I, I feel like is that it would be in the best interest of the city to change things. And then I call Dr. Ripple, and he goes, "No, we don't have any intentions unless you tell us to do so." So it was just, in my mind, it was a conflict, and so I appreciate both of your explanations.
And there may have been initially, but that was before he and I had really had a chance to sit down and talk about the legal issues involved, so.
Thank you.
Councilman Summers?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I think from what Deanna's saying and what Dr. Ripple was referring to, I think we're looking at the simplified version that this thing would just come up for, we're not looking to rewrite 40,000 regs on this thing. Basically, it'd just be reviewed straight up. For maybe trying to go for two for two there, as Lance was referring with the mayor, you know, I think the simple solution is, I, I, I'd like to support Deanna's offer, but to get it done on the same time length, given, I think it took Dr. Ripple's crew a couple of weeks to fix the last one, would be to have it ready for the next executive session. After the executive session, we could hold a special session, get it done, and then vote on, on the regular session, and we'll have both of them done in the same time period. Yeah, I don't think that, that's much of a problem right there. We've, we've done that procedure before, so I'd like to see us go ahead and do that, send it back, and if the mayor would go for it, a special session after exec, and then we could do the second vote on the regular session next month, and we'll cover everything in the same length of time then. Thank you.
And if you're asking for my opinion, I would only say that we are, I mean, we are presuming that an independent body, that being the Regional Planning Commission, is going to do what it is that is being requested as a potential amendment. And, and I don't know if that's the case. If I knew that they were going to do exactly what it is that Councilwoman McGlaughlin wanted as part of her amendment, that the RPC was going to do that, I, I don't know if we're entitled to speak for them. So, I mean, we can send it back to them and tell them, "We want you to fix it so that we have final approval of all cluster developments." And all I'm saying is, is the RPC doesn't have to do that. They, I mean, they have independent voting authority to make that decision. Now, I don't know that Dr. Ripple is authorized on behalf of the entire membership of the RPC to tell us that's what they're going to do now, but if he is, that, maybe so. I mean, Dr. Ripple, do you want to come up? I mean, I, I don't know that we are, as a city council, entitled to tell the RPC that they have to do something.
I think that goes along with the email that I sent all y'all, that it can be init, changes can be initiated either by adjacent property owners with the file of petition, and that's not at issue here, or by the RPC, not the RPC staff, the RPC. Now, the RPC can do it at the behest or at the urging of the RPC staff, but it has to start with the RPC or with the city council. And that's all it says, it just says "by the city council." Doesn't say that one member of the city council can direct the RPC or the RPC staff, it says "the city council." And so I take, and as I explained in that email I sent y'all, I take that to mean through a resolution. And so I, I, I think, though, that you could, if you wanted to, refer it back through, but you, it would, you'd need to have something more than just a, a motion to refer back, because all you have before you is the, what came out of the RPC. And so you would almost have to do like a, and I don't even know if it's, be procedurally correct, but a motion to refer back to committee to study and make a recommendation on the issue of the city council approving cluster development applications. I suppose you could do it that way. But, you know, really, I think it should be done by a resolution, but.
I only make that point, members, just because I, I think if the argument is, is how long is it gonna take to get all this accomplished, I think it's going to take longer than just saying it can be ready for the next council meeting or the next executive session, because it's going to require the RPC to take some action, and we haven't even advised them what action we want them to take, other than we're telling them we want to have approval. I don't know if that is sufficient for another independent body to take action based on those statements. So, I, I mean, when you, I'm just responding to the comments by Councilman Summers about we can just agree to send it back and it will all happen by the next council meeting, and I don't think that's possible. So I take that for whatever it's worth, as far as how you want to vote on the motion to send it back to the RPC. Councilman Red?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I, I too believe that the council should vote on cluster zonings, and I think that Bill somehow read my mind whenever he was talking about a special called meeting and that thing. I was thinking maybe in two weeks, or just whenever they would be finished. And Lance has indicated that, you know, for the purpose of doing that, we would probably need to change the language here of this motion that refers back to the Regional Planning Commission to add for the purpose of the council approving cluster zoning, and I make that motion for that amendment to be-
That was already in the motion.
Oh, for the purpose? Okay. Well, then I think that we should go ahead and, and send it back and do the special call meeting.
If I may, there's a little problem with it, though, and that is, I, I think you need to give them a little more guidance and direction if you're going to pass this, in the sense that, okay, we want, council wants to have, be a part of the approval process, we want to be able to prove it. But do you want the cluster to become its own zoning district or not? And that's one of the things that I think you need to tell them you want them to address. I mean, because they could come back and just go, "Well, okay, a cluster is not a zone." But if you want them to, every time somebody applies for a cluster application, the city council can approve, has to approve it, that's one way of doing it. The other way is saying, "We're gonna create a whole separate zone called a cluster zone." And that's something that you need to, I think, give them some guidance on. Because remember, any change that's a material substantive type of change, they have to review it first.
Councilman Red, were you?
I'm finished.
Okay. Let's see, Councilman Summers?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't want to put words in Deanna's mouth, but I think what Lance said in the last thing is, we would just like to be the final approving authority for a cluster. We don't have to recreate a whole new set of regulations on this. I think we want to just be the final approval on this. And given there was communications with the planning commission before to make all these changes, I think if that's clear enough, that we just want to be the final authority, make whatever sentence changed on that, and if they don't want to make it, we can still have our special session next week, it won't have it in there if they don't agree with it, and then we can proceed on and vote. And we still haven't lost any time either way. Thank you.
I would just ask, if that's what we're talking about here, I think that, I'm gonna ask Dr. Ripple to come back up, because I see him out there shaking his head as if what is now being talked about may not be possible under the current zoning guidelines and zoning regulations and the function of the Regional Planning Commission. It would seem to me, does it have to be a separate zoning classification for it to be taken up at this point?
You are changing, as, as I mentioned, as I stated before, from once, from something that's merely a ministerial action on the part of the planning commission to some that is, that means if it meets the requirements, the planning commission shall approve it, to one now, which is the same, is the same as a rezoning, a discretionary action. That is a significant policy shift that you're doing here. And therefore, I would be far more comfortable that you would pass a resolution that would specifically state that you, what you want to accomplish here. Do you want to accomplish a new zoning district, this is a cluster provision, taking basically what's in there now, but saying it's gonna be subject to the approval of the city council? Do you want to do an, do you want to do an overlay, which means it could apply wherever you wanted it to apply, but it would require a vote of the city council? So there's all different ways. The bottom, the bottom line here is, I'm saying, you can pass whatever amendments you want, but my preference is that you pass a resolution such that the request for the, the change in the zoning ordinance begins with this council. The planning commission, if you pass what is being talked about here, the question is raised whether or not who is originating this particular change. And I will tell you that the staff is not particularly inclined to do so, and I'll tell you likewise, the planning commission is not gonna be inclined to make this significant policy shift. This action, if you want the action to occur, to amend the zoning ordinance such that it is now a rezoning as opposed to a ministerial thing, then the, then you should pass a resolution, it should originate with this council, that the majority of this council shows its pleasure and asks the planning commission, refers it to the planning commission, planning commission's got to hold a public hearing, and then refer it back to you. We are under, and you likewise are under, public hearing requirements with a 15-day notice requirement. And I would think that the magnitude of the shift here that we're making from something that you might call a Band-Aid fix to something where now is a significant policy change and something that needs to go back to the planning commission, restart the process, and then be reintroduced as a new ordinance amendment, as opposed to trying to fix what you have, have now. So we're under the structure of either the, either property owners, the city council, or the regional planning commission are, are the origin, are originators of the requested change. And number two, that under state law, we've got to follow certain notification requirements for all of the public and hold that public hearing and make a recommendation. At the end of this, you pass a resolution, goes to planning commission, regardless of what the planning commission does, it's gonna come back to you one way or the other, it's your pleasure to act as you so desire as a legislative body, but you've got to follow the procedure. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Allen?
I think he kind of just answered my, Dr. Ripple just kind of answered my question, because it's making it seem like that we send it back to them, that they have to approve it. I thought we were the final approving body.
You are the final approving body, but I'm asking that you be the originator-
I understand.
-of the, of the zoning application, in essence, a zoning amendment application, that this body be the originator. That way you can sure it can happen. If you leave it up to the staff, or you leave it up, leaving it up to the planning commission, they may not step forward and-
You're saying through a resolution?
Of this body, yes. So I know you're, so I know your clear intent and what you wish to, to accomplish.
Okay, because I know the regional planning commission, the staff nor the commission have the, they didn't have to deal with this issue. They made their decision for this cluster, and they didn't have to deal with it, we had to deal with it. The buck started with us and it stops with us. And I understand the process that you're talking about, that we need to go through, but I think we really need to, I'm just talking to the council, now, we need to go through the process to get it right.
Councilman McGlaughlin?
Thank you, Mayor. My intent was not to redo all the zoning classifications, it was to insert as an amendment into 5.9 under the zoning classification that this body would have final approval on a cluster. Each cluster would come in front of us for a final approval, and that was my intent of the motion of sending it back to the planning commission, so they could decide if they want to approve that or not, so it could come back to us and be part of the rewrite of this section.
Any further discussion? Oh, Councilwoman Guzman, I apologize.
No, that's okay, because I did turn it off. I'm still not understanding, with something that we already know that is so gray, why are we not clearing it up and making it black and white right now? Because all that's being said is that we already know that the things that are on the books that right now are a problem. So why don't we just fix that? They already said that we can still do the other, however, if we don't fix this today and then Monday we get a lawsuit, that won't be funny, because then we'll be sitting here again, talking about why didn't we fix it, and then that's another argument. So while we're here now, we can fix this part of it, let it be done, and then go forward and make all the real changes that we need to make. That's all I have to say.
Councilman McGlaughlin?
Yeah. An ordinance takes two readings, and what Bill had suggested we could do- An ordinance takes two readings, and what Bill had suggested we could do is, if everything's worked out, we could still vote on, vote on the first reading, which we would be doing now at our executive session at the end of the month, and have second reading on April 4th. So it'd still be in the same time window. This, the changes that are being presented can't go into effect until after the second reading. Right, we could do one at the end of March and the second one on April 4th, which the second, if this was passed tonight, the second reading would still be April 4th.
And I, I understand all that, but I, what I'm hearing from Dr. Ripple is that if we send something back for revisions and it's not in the ordinance form that specifically tells them what it is that we want them to do, that then what they're going to send back to us may not be what we want and may not be what you like. So when we vote on second reading, we may not be voting on what we want. It would seem to me, from what Dr. Ripple is saying, that if you go ahead and pass this ordinance tonight, and then draft a resolution requesting the changes that we have done and introduce that at the next council meeting, and a resolution only takes one reading, so we can pass at the, in one reading, get that taken up, and then we can still change that. Passing this ordinance does not affect the change that you are requesting in the resolution, because the resolution is going to require some substantial changes other than just telling them to give us final approval, because they have to know what that final approval is. Is it as a separate zoning classification? Is it on the cluster developments? That's what I hear Dr. Ripple saying. Mr. Baker, I'm not, I'm, I'm just trying to procedurally figure out what the right step is here for us to take as far as making sure that the Regional Planning Commission has the information they need to make the decision that we want.
There's various ways to skin the cat. You can do it, you know, the way you're talking about. You can do it the way Councilman Guzman's talking about. My recommendation to you and opinion is, you need to go ahead and fix what's now before you by approving what, what you got before you, and then you can take it up. You, you could still call a special call session for immediately after a, a next executive session to introduce and pass a resolution that would direct the RPC to consider an amendment to the now new, well, it wouldn't have passed yet, but to the cluster provision, adding a provision saying, "Any cluster applications are not effective until they, you know, get city council approval." And then it would, that, then the RPC would know what it is you're seeking. They could have a public hearing on it, debate it, and then vote on it, and whether they approve it or not, really doesn't matter, because, as you know, it'll come back then to the city council, and at that point, it'll have to be in an ordinance form, and you can vote on it, you know, at that time and fix, fix the, the problem if, if a majority of the council believes it's a problem, that they approve all cluster applications.
Councilman Wallace?
I, maybe to play dumb and maybe a little bit to play devil's advocate, but I mean, I guess my question for the other members of the body, and you may have hit on it a little bit, I mean, I, I want an explanation of why do we think that the council, I mean, we talked tonight, most of our stuff has been on subs, not, it's not been on substantive, it's just been all on procedural, how are we going to do this? But explain to me why, what is it going to change by having the council approve cluster zonings? It's not even zonings, actually, but clusters, as opposed to having it as a ministerial function like, like it currently is?
Are you directing that question to?
I guess anyone who's been a proponent of this, and I think the one who made the motion was Councilwoman McLaughlin, so.
Councilwoman McLaughlin?
Okay. I had originally discussed this last Thursday.
Right, you know, I wasn't, I wasn't here.
Yeah, I know. And it's to give an extra step to make sure that all of the affected adjacent property owners are aware that this process is happening and that we get to, to, to discuss it, and it puts more responsibility on us. But we meet in the evenings when most of the public is available, and the planning commission meets at 2:00 in the afternoon. This just gives an extra layer of the process so that, so that the affected property owners have two opportunities to voice their opinion, to do two different bodies that make a decision on it.
Are you aware of any other municipalities that require such a thing in Tennessee?
No.
Okay. That's all my questions.
Okay. Councilwoman McLaughlin, would you lie on, because you wanted to be recognized on-
Yeah, but I think Councilman Allen was flashing after Councilman Wallace.
He took it off.
Okay. Okay, based on the last thing that Lance said in there, I'm willing to withdraw my motion to defer back if the mayor would agree to have a special session on March 28th so that I could introduce a resolution.
You know, I, I will consider calling a special session at your request so that you can file your resolution. I, I don't know what date that is. Is that the same date?
It's March 28th.
It's our executive session.
Executive session.
That's the date of the executive session?
Yes, Mayor.
I, I would be willing to do that so we could take up your, your resolution.
Thank you, then I will withdraw my motion.
I will withdraw my second if I make the second.
All right, we have no objection to the withdrawal of the motion in the second, which Mr. Baker tells us we can't do, but since we don't have any objection, we're doing it anyway. So we are now back on the ordinance. And I'll, I'll tell Ms. Harris, get that back up there now. All right, we are back on the ordinance. Councilman Stewart, did you?
May I call for the question?
I don't even think we need to vote on it, because I don't see anybody that wants to talk anymore on this, so.
It's just for being recognized previously.
Well, the question's been called for and properly seconded, and just to make sure that we're following proper procedure, all in favor of the question, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The question prevails. We are now voting on ordinance 74. All members in favor of ordinance 74, vote aye. Opposed, vote no. Let every member cast your vote. Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Yes, 11. No, one. No vote, one.
Ordinance 74 is adopted on first reading.